Good morning and welcome to the Sunshine Coast Regional District Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, November the 13th. It's not Friday the 13th, thanks heavens. We are meeting here in the boardroom of the SCRD, which is in the territories of the Squamish and Seashell First Nations. We have before us an agenda. I have one initial correction, which is that item 4.6 is not actually on the agenda. It got booted to a future agenda. So just scratch 4.6, but other than that, are the assembled folks happy with the agenda? If so, would somebody move? Moved and seconded? Calling the question, all in favor? Thank you. Motion to receive all reports and communications? Moved, seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much. Our first item up is the Bylaw 778, a major undertaking, it would seem. And over to staff for an introduction.
Thank you Chair. Good morning. The purpose of this report is to present the proposed Sunshine Coast Regional District Water Rates and Regulation Bylaw Number 778 for the committee's consideration. This new bylaw is the result of a multi-departmental collaboration between Legislative Services, Infrastructure Services Utilities Division, as well as Finance. It's been drafted to repeal and replace the existing Water Rates and Regulation Bylaw Number 422, which has been in effect for over 30 years, since 1995. Staff are recommending the board proceed with consideration of readings and adoption of the proposed bylaw as presented to the committee. Overall, the proposed new bylaw modernizes and clarifies the regional district's regulatory framework for water service delivery. It incorporates current legislative standards and operational practices and introduces several key updates, including the implementation of volumetric billing for North and South Pender Harbor Water Services, beginning in 2026. It provides clear processes for water service applications and metering. We have updated fee schedules, included simplifying the formatting to support financial sustainability, and in our view, the bylaw has improved language and structure to enhance clarity and ease of administration. Also before you is a late addition to the report, Attachment B. This attachment provides additional detail on updates in the bylaw in comparison to what is currently in effect in Bylaw 422. And this handout will be added to the agenda package and made available online, so it will form part of the public record. And then finally, I'll get our recorder to display my screen here. We have a timeline just to walk you through the process as to how it will unfold. As we move today, November 13th, so the bylaw comes forward for committee consideration. On November 20th, the Budget Committee will contemplate fees and charges that would be implemented into Bylaw 778, should it be recommended to go forward for readings. And then on November 27th, at our board meeting, those committee recommendations would go through to the board for consideration of adoption. And then on December 11th, the final bylaw would be brought forward with the approved fees in place, where we would request that the board consider giving it readings and adoption, and it would come into effect on January 1st, 2026. We're happy to answer any questions you have today.
Thank you. And I will say that actually it is quite readable, which I found to my happy surprise when I started trying to read some portions of this bylaw. So, directors, and we are using physical hands today. Director Stanford?
Thank you Chair. I think this will really help. It's good to see this, and it is, you're right, Director McMahon, it is readable, which is good. I'm wondering, does this have any, will this be helpful bringing on any potentially new water surfaces? And I'm thinking of Hopkins Landing. Would this provide any facilitation or make it easier for that kind of process?
Thank you for the question. No, the process with respect to take over Hopkins is outside of the scope of this legislation, of this bylaw. Other than if there would be new service connections being established as part of that process, they would of course have to adhere to the stipulations in this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Hmm. I had a question, but no, I can't find the section. So, anybody else in the meantime? Director Stanford?
So I have a question. It's on page 20 of the overall package and conditions, 6.1, Conditions of Service. 6.1.2 says the regional district is not liable for failure if the water supply is consequence of any accident, not responsible for excessive pressure, lack of pressure. Also, the, there can be natural deterioration, obsolescence of the water system. So there's a variety of things that the regional district is not responsible for. Where is it laid out what the regional district is responsible for in, in terms of water provision?
Thank you for the question. So the authority for the SCRD to supply and deliver water to the community is set out in the service establishing bylaws. So the preamble to the bylaw identify those three services.
Thank you. I found my section. It is Section 9.5, Parcel Taxes Farm Class Assessments. And I'm asking this because I've been asked this several times, is why is it do, that property owners need to apply every year in writing by January the 5th to confirm their commercial farm class? It seems to add an extra step for property owners. And so, does the assessment people not talk to the regional district?
Thank you for the question. We certainly review the assessment information. We do receive the assessment information, and we do have the ability to review that and make those changes. Part of the assessment process, though, is for these properties to apply to the assessment board every year for that farm status. And so I believe that's where the, where the clause in the bylaw comes from. Now, from a process perspective, yes, we do cross-reference and check. So that's certainly something that we could look at to streamline going forward.
Yeah, if some streamlining would be possible, it would be helpful because it adds an extra step that property owners need not, or maybe a little confusing. So I am looking for further questions. Director Toth?
Thank you Chair. I'm looking at page 16 of the staff report, sorry, 16 of the item. I don't know whether it's, what it is in the PDF file, sorry. 9.3.5 in the bylaw. If an account holder experiences abnormal water consumption due to an underground leak to the main service line, or because of fire suppression system, the account holder may apply to the regional district for billing adjustment. Are we looking at only leaks to a main service line that we're willing to provide credit for? Or is this a mechanism that can also be used if property owners do have an excessive leak? Recognizing that notification can take up to a month, it might take a couple weeks to schedule a repair. You know, you could be living with a leak for a couple of months, and before you can actually get it resolved. And so I'm just wondering if this is only for, you know, main service line, or if there's any ability to consider it a little more broadly? Thank you.
Great question. Who would like to take that question?
Thank you.
Jim Rosenbaum?
I will start off. The SCRD is, staff are preparing a policy around this item for the board's consideration, and will bring this forward early in the new year.
Do we have a rough timeline on that?
Thank you. It will be early in the new year because we would like to have it in place prior to April 1st, which will be when the first quarterly bills will fall on people's doorstep in Pender.
Perfect. Thank you. Do I see any further questions? I shall tap dance while Director Toth finds his page.
Okay, thank you Chair. I'm looking at Schedules E, F, G, and H, and I, basically all of the like special cost recovery service areas. Recognizing that the dates that are assigned here are probably when these particular systems were brought in, I'm wondering if we're updating the bylaw is it worth us, including the, like updating the costs? Because it says, you know, from 2013 onward, rates will be adjusted based on a prime. But shouldn't, isn't this an opportunity for us to put a new baseline in the bylaw or in these schedules? Thank you.
Who would like to tackle that one?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Staff will consider that and see what's possible prior to December 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a final question about communication. This is, I assume that this rewrite has been in the works for quite some considerable time, and is based on a lot of feedback from many sources. But what, what sort of consultation has there been with, say, developers in the community about, you know, the usability of this bylaw and it coming down?
I would say, thank you for the question Chair. I think most of the engagement that we've done up to this point has been really around the preparation of mock billing. So it's been more communication with the residents who will receive the invoices. And then I think through our ongoing just day-to-day communication with the community about SCRD water. I mean, it's a high interest area. But I can't say for certain, we've done targeted engagement with group, groups in particular. It's more been broader to the community, and it's been targeted at homeowners and residents and the ratepayers.
Thank you. Well, this is a, you know, vast improvement over what we had before. And if, if we find some little things that need tweaking over the next year as we roll out volumetric billing, then we will have the opportunity to do so, I am sure. So, I'm not seeing any eager hands out there. So are there any motions that, that might be made? She said, hinting broadly about page, where the heck am I? Three. Director Toth?
Thank you Chair. I will move Recommendation 1 for Item 4.1 as presented.
I see a seconder. If there is no further debate, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes unanimously, in fact. So I'm just going to call a very brief break here while a camera issue is adjusted. Okay, if the technology gods are smiling on us, we are resuming the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Thursday, November the 13th. And the next item up is Item 4.2, Renewal and Consolidation of Building and Plumbing Bylaws. And over to staff, please.
Thank you and good morning. Staff are pleased to present today's report, which outlines background and general information about the renewal and consolidation of the current building and plumbing bylaws. An amalgamated draft building bylaw has been prepared and attached for consideration. Draft SCRD Building Bylaw Number 779 incorporates key administrative updates intended to limit liability, reduce ambiguity, maximize enforceability, and ensure regulatory compliance. No significant changes to permit and service fees have been included, and regulatory updates are limited to reflect prevailing regulations and professional guidelines only. Modifications to promote harmonization with neighboring jurisdictions, flexibility towards integrating digital service delivery, and increasing permit processing efficiency have also been included. All changes considered, feedback received over the last several years from various stakeholders, as well as challenges identified by staff. Subject to being forwarded to the board for consideration and adoption, the draft bylaw would come into force on January 1st, 2026. Staff would be happy to try and answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much. I have a question. On page 50, it notes that building permit extensions have been reduced from two to one. And I was just wondering what the reason for that was?
Thank you for the question. It's intended to promote work being completed in a timely fashion, and also in accordance with the most current regulations. It's also a step towards regional harmonization with both our neighboring jurisdictions, maximizing a permit cycle at three years rather than six years. Six years is believed to be maybe the lengthiest cycle in the province right now.
Oh, isn't it nice to have a record? Director Gabius?
Thank you Chair. No question. Very clear report. A lot of work went into this, this document, I'm sure. Appreciate it. I want to, I would like to move the recommendation on page 48. And I'm happy to see that stakeholders were engaged, the feedback was considered, and that there's a communication strategy in the works as well. So, thank you.
Yes, I noted that as well. Do we have a seconder? Yes, thank you. Motion is seconded? Any further questions? I am not seeing a lot of questions. So, in that case, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that certainly passes. Thank you very much for all the work in updating these bylaws.
Thank you.
I'm glad somebody else has to do it, not me. So, next item up is the Town of Gibson's OCP Referral. And over to planning.
Thank you Chair. The Town of Gibson's is currently nearing the end of its OCP update process, and is seeking comments from SCRD and other governmental bodies on the nature and content of the draft, particularly as it pertains to shared service delivery, edge planning, and other areas for collaboration. Staff responsible for services and programs delivered within the town or in areas interfacing with the town, referred the OCP draft, as it was on October 7th, which is available on the Town of Gibson's website. Staff are asked to provide comment on sections of the document relevant to their service area with a particular focus on policies or objectives that could impact service delivery, implications for regional growth, opportunities for collaboration, and considerations going forward. Staff provided the general, the following general observations. With population growth will come an increase in demand for infrastructure services provided in partnership with SCRD. The town's proposed growth framework focuses on balancing social, economic, and environmental objectives, which is in line with the board's endorsed 2023 regional growth framework. And staff identified a number of areas of ongoing and new collaboration, as noted in the report. And further, staff would just point out that a separate review of the Town of Gibson's OCP after first reading will be needed to address solid waste management plan conformance in keeping with the Local Government Act. So you can expect to see a further report in the coming months. And Matt Thompson, Senior Planner, who is the technical lead for the referral, or I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of questions, but I, I would have welcomed the opportunity to discuss this with my APC, since we are a fringe area to the town, and we are affected by some of the policies and decisions going forward. Under solid
Thank you, Chair. Staff don't have any, there were no particular projects or or specific contemplations behind this, but through conversations with staff at the town, the acknowledgement of our interconnection through things like watersheds and habitat corridors was noted. And so if there are opportunities emerging, they, that would align with many strategic and service level plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Director White?
Yeah, I guess I was curious about that, too. It seems to, I think it's just the wording of it, kind of when it says along the boundary, it's kind of like, are we, are we thinking of the the Gibson's Creek Ravine or something? Because that's along the boundary, but I think we're actually talking about all parks and needing to collaborate on, you know, the fact that not far from the Town of Gibson's there's a dog park that the S C R D looks after. And sometimes we get, we get demands from residents about improving that dog park. And meanwhile, we've got Brothers Park, which is a regional park that that is used by, uses all over the coast. So I think more we're talk, we're probably talking about all parks here, not just, the wording along the boundary kind of conjures a, some, a specific park on the, on the border.
I would agree that we could probably ditch the phrase along the Town S C R D boundary because it's it's a much broader collaboration than that. It's like the, the playing fields, the sports field strategy that's underway right now, which makes sense because we have sports fields all over the coast. The comments from B C Transit must have been cut and pasted from some policy document they have somewhere. So, um, they were kind of silly in the context, but whatever. That's them. So at the bottom of page one hundred and four, I just, I didn't know what I thought about D P A areas for ditches. And we, we certainly have significant stormwater management problems in in this part of the coast, which are not really addressed here. And and I personally would have liked some reference to the, the town's stormwater management I'm just wondering if staff have any observations about, or or further information about D P A areas for ditches? This was a new idea to me.
Thank you, Chair. Staff would be happy to follow up with information pulled from the provincial regulation that relates to classification of streams. The general comment that staff have is that the Riparian Areas Regulation is being reviewed by the province, and we know that definitional clarifications are part of that review. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I know there are some questions about when is a ditch a ditch and when is it a stream? And sometimes provincially, it is classified as a stream. But anyway, Director White?
I don't have something specific about this, so if someone else does.
My apologies. Director Stamford.
Some of the things that popped out for me is when speaking about building relationships with the Squamish Nation, specifically around engagement and reconciliation and and the checkwelp reserve lands. I'm hoping to see stronger language around collaboration with the the S C R D, given that checkwelp is entirely within Area F. And I also recognize that. It is.
Squamish Nation land.
Well, this is, yes, so as I was going to finish, given that that's not entirely recognized, and that's fine, I would like more collaboration. Because when I look at the lines on the map, I see that we need to collaborate more strongly when we're talking with the Squamish Nation.
Uh, okay, that, I'm not sure how much cross-debate we want to get into right now. I, that's a comment.
Well, I'd like to hear what Chair White is saying, because I'm looking.
All right. Okay, over to Director White.
I think that's concerning. I, I, it's Squamish Nation land. It's not within the Town of Gibson's, nor is it within, within Area F. It's there, it's Squamish Nation land that was, that's been allocated to them by the federal government since about early twentieth century.
Yes, so that's what I'm, I was trying to get around to that before I got, is that, that we work together more closely and that that language is more directive, given where checkwelp lands are.
Thank you, Director Stamford. Good point. The, are, my next question is, and I appreciate the referral to the areas E N F A P Cs on page ninety-seven suggested. Are we going to be able to turn this around for this month?
Thank you, Chair. So staff would, we'd probably proceed, following the practice that we've used where a committee makes a recommendation for referral, and put this on the November A P C agendas, which are the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, I believe, which I believe is the same week as the board would consider the, the recommendations from this, today's committee. And we continue communicating with Town of Gibson's in an effort to support their project timelines while acknowledging that until the board makes decisions, things are not official. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity for my A P C to take a look at this, partly because it's also good practice for our own O C P processes, to look at one that's largely ready to go, and so that we can be inspired in in our, in our own proceedings. Thank you. Are there hands? Director Bax, were you?
Sure. If, if we've made our comments about the whole thing, I'd like to move the recommendations as they appear on ninety-seven, page ninety-seven.
Fine. Is there a seconder? Yes. Okay, that's seconded. Director White?
Okay, I have heard the comments. I am concerned about the use of the word reliance and rely on, in the water section, and I maybe get some, like some elaboration on that perhaps. I mean, because I think maybe some other work needs to be going on. If there's, if there's a concern here that the Town of Gibson's relies on S C R D water during heavy lawn sprinkling like that, that's news to me. I mean, I know that, I know that because of our infrastructure, water, kind of a nominal amount of water goes back and forth because of just the the connections, but rely is a whole different, I mean, do we need to be going to, this is a serious concern, because we, we know we have definitely enough water in the Town of Gibson's to be able to support any lawn sprinkling during the summer, and we don't, we don't see ourselves as relying on S C R D to water. And maybe we need to change, I mean, I don't think it's an issue. It kind of, it's kind of, I'm concerned this is an overstatement as well. But also, there's other ways to, I mean, also the, the statement that continued growth will increase the reliance on S C R D water. There's other ways that the town is working on to, to address these needs. I mean, to, when we're looking at growth over time, I mean, we've got extensive work that's being put into planning for water extraction in order to, and we've got, you know, working with the province on this as well, within, within the town, within our own water system, within the Gibson's aquifer, and it's not necessarily going to depend on a reliance on the S C R D. And I don't know, I mean, that's, that's everything that I know from what we talked about in the town, and it kind of suggests to me that maybe there's not enough conversation between the S C R D and the town, if that's what the S C R D's perspective is. So I'm concerned about that. And I mean, the the section about opportunities for collaboration is fantastic because it does talk about that collaboration and the one water strategy. It's just the, the lead into it, it seems a little not, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't align with the work that we're doing.
Staff, have any comments? J M Rosenbaum?
Thank you. I acknowledge the, that the word reliance with respect to peak demand is maybe currently an overstatement, because there is, during peak demand, there is, as Director indicated, there is water flowing from the S C R D to the Town of Gibson's, and that's, but those are marginal amounts. That's happening during the summer, almost on a daily basis, but as indicated, it's very, very low demand. With respect to fire flow and emergency supply, it's my, it's my understanding that it is reliant, that there is still substantial reliance because of the lack of reservoir capacity within the Town of Gibson's. It's not a supply situation, it's a reservoir capacity situation. So it's my, it's our understanding as in S C R D that there is still the reliance. If the reliance is, has been solved by infrastructure upgrades by the town, we have been notified by that.
Thank you very much. Back to Director White and then to Director Bax.
I think it's just, it, it's just the exercise of looking forward of a plan, and it's not, I mean, we, we have other opportunities and, I mean, infrastructure considerations that we're looking at, just, just like we did when we took Upper Gibson's off S C R D water about eight years ago. We, we can also look at addressing our own fire flow needs, too. That's something that we're looking at. So it's just the, the absolute statement here, that continued growth will increase the Town of Gibson's reliance on S C R D water. It could, absolutely it could, but there are other, other avenues that we're looking at. It's not, this doesn't need, I don't think it's necessarily an absolute statement to see only possibility that might happen, and it's, it's actually not our plan. We're, we're looking at other, other avenues to, to decrease, decrease reliance on S C R D water, because we know you need it. That's, that's been, that's been what we're working on, we've been working on for quite some time.
Thank you. We might consider changing the word will to may. And Director Bax?
If I may offer as way of, another word to use would be utilization to, utilization of, of water instead of rely. It's a, I know that the, the language is very important in these type of things, and the, the Town of Gibson's continues to utilize S C R D water during emergencies, whether or not it's a lot, they're not relying on it, but they are using it. And they may, the, as the residential developments in Upper Gibson's may further increase this utilization during peak demand periods.
Thank you.
These are just suggestions.
Yeah, we've made a few suggestions here. Overall, you know, opportunities for collaboration going forward make total sense. So, and having our water systems connected so that we can support each other in emergencies is the sensible way to go. So we have a motion on the table. I am not seeing anybody else with a hand up right now, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Thank you very much, staff. Okay, next up, solid waste management plan update. Over to staff, thank you.
Thank you. So as the committee may be aware, the S C R D has been updating our solid waste management plan since 2023. Recently, we had an intergovernmental meeting where we presented the results of our two feasibility studies and long-term disposal solutions for the region. And on October twenty-third, the Committee of the Whole indicated a preference to incorporate vertical expansion in, of the seashell landfill into the draft solid waste management plan. So we've brought forward this report for information, which is basically the updated draft plan with that vertical expansion piece included, minus a lot of the financial details, which we'll only have more certainty on further along in the 2026 budget process early next year. So we've brought this draft plan forward with a bit of a rough outline of a plan for upcoming engagement to get this out to the community early and to give everyone a little bit of a heads up on what's, what's coming in. It's not, this doesn't need, I don't think it's necessarily an absolute statement as the only possibility that might happen, and it's, it's actually not our plan. We're, we're looking at other, other avenues.
Okay, thank you.
To decrease, decrease reliance on SCRD water because we know you need it. That's, that's been, that's been what we're working on, we've been working on for quite some time.
Thank you. We might consider changing the word will to may. And Director Bax.
If I may offer as way of, another word to use would be utilization to, utilization of, of water instead of rely. It's a, I know that the language is very important in these type of things and the, the Town of Gibson's continues to utilize SCRD water during emergencies, whether or not it's a lot, they're not relying on it, but they are using it and they may, the, as the residential developments in Upper Gibson's may further increase this utilization during peak demand periods.
Thank you.
These are just suggestions.
Yeah, we've made a few suggestions here. Overall, you know, opportunities for collaboration going forward make total sense. So, and having our water systems connected so that we can support each other in emergencies is the sensible way to go. So we have a motion on the table. I am not seeing anybody else with a hand up right now, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Thank you very much, staff. Okay, next up, solid waste management plan update. Over to staff, thank you.
Thank you. So as the committee may be aware, the SCRD has been updating our solid waste management plan since 2023. Recently, we had an intergovernmental meeting where we presented the results of our two feasibility studies and long-term disposal solutions for the region. And on October 23rd, the Committee of the Whole indicated a preference to incorporate vertical expansion in, of the seashell landfill into the draft solid waste management plan. So we've brought forward this report for information, which is basically the updated draft plan with that vertical expansion piece included, minus a lot of the financial details, which we'll only have more certainty on further along in the 2026 budget process early next year. So we've brought this draft plan forward with a bit of a rough outline of a plan for upcoming engagement to get this out to the community early and to give everyone a little bit of a heads up on what's, what's coming in early 2026. Staff are happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you. And I really enjoyed last week's PTAC meeting where we also got to discuss vertical expansion and the plan. I feel like I've read this plan quite a few times by now. So personally, I don't have any questions except I suppose that we have an awful lot of things going on to, to engage the community on. And do we sort of have a chart of engagement going forward for next year so that we can all keep track of who we're engaging about what, when?
Thank you for your question. Yeah, we do. I'm working with SLT right now around a look ahead to 2026 and trying to identify where those crunch points are when we're out to the community with, you know, several different engagements. And I've also spoken with managers involved in those separate projects to ensure that if there's opportunities to tag team on some of those engagements or events, that we'd be taking those.
Good. I'm looking around. Director Bax.
I'm looking at page 113 and I'm hoping that at some point when this doesn't become a draft anymore, that someone will change their name from name to a real name.
I'm sure they will. Director Inkster.
Thank you, Chair. The, this discussion at this, with this board has gone on for a number of months now, probably years, and we've moved towards a decision. So this is good as to what next steps are that doesn't include the export of our created garbage. One thing I would ask the board and/or through, through the CEO perhaps is I would, these are, these are examples where I would love to see staff go to the municipalities and tell them what, what the board's decided and give them some information on these, these big decisions, because this is a big decision. And I'd love to see those happen, just like the sea level rise came to our council and the staff was there for about a half an hour and they answered some questions. And usually on that issue, one of our council members has a lot of questions, but the rest of the council is just appreciative to get the information so they can explain to the public what's happening regionally. Thanks.
Thank you. That's a really good suggestion because, yeah. CAO?
Yeah, thank you for that comment. And I, that is why we're having more intergovernmentals such as the solid waste transit. And that is because having everybody in a room in, instead of that one-on-one conversation provides probably more value for those very large regional implications like this one. And so there's more to come and that's what we're considering as part of the ongoing engagement, especially for the solid waste management plan because it has such regional significance. It hits each of the local governments. And so we try to moderate that in between, you know, big P policy decisions and implications and bringing everybody together to smaller P ones like the flood mapping. And so those in collaboration with technical staff and staff and working with the other CAOs is definitely something that we're doing more of. So thank you.
Thank you. The intergovernmentals are a really good opportunity to ask a lot of in-depth questions and really go down all those rabbit holes that we like so much. However, the attendance, the last one was maybe not ideal. So if we could do a bit of work on scheduling, because I understand that a lot of counselors work full-time and so it can be difficult to get them out on a weekday during the day. So Director White.
Thank you for raising that. I really strongly would support that the organization of these meetings be done intergovernmentally as well.
Thank you. Anything else on solid waste management plan? I think PTAC's done some good work here, by the way, and our consultants and the staff. Okay, well, that item was for information, so I think we're going to keep moving right along here. Thank you very much, staff. Next item up is the Regional Accessibility Advisory Committee minutes for our information. Director Gabius, I believe you've been attending.
Yes, I am the board liaison for the committee. Sorry, I'm just trying to get to the minutes. Yes, they just recently, these are minutes from the second to last meeting. They just had their last meeting a few weeks ago. I guess of note is the recommendation that the committee put forward, sorry, I'm still scrolling through the solid waste management plan, where the, there was a discussion about having a person hired to implement the plan, but it was recognized, I think, by the committee members that the, the governments would need to find grants or funding and staff did look into funding for such an endeavor and could not really find anything that would be sufficient for the task. So my understanding at this time is that this would be something that the committee would like to see in the future, whether or not now is the time or whether or not we have the, the funding for it is to be determined. But the, we'll see the minutes for, for the next meeting soon where the, the committee is now considering continuing in a different, in a different way. So it'll be interesting to see what they, what they come up with and how they continue the work. But I think the recommendation to, something to keep in mind, I would say, but that would need a bit more consideration in the future. But I also want to congratulate the Chair, Mr. Conway, an excellent chair for, for this group, and he's now been selected to be on the ferries accessibility committee, which is great. He's an amazing advocate.
Thank you. And I hope we will hear more from that committee since we all are aware of places where BC ferries could improve their accessibility. Director Bax.
That was an understatement. Yes, thank you. I was honored to, or had the pleasure of being in the seniors transportation work group meeting yesterday, which was attended by two of the committee members, Ellen Eaton and Anna Latazi were there. And we did have an in-depth discussion about funding and different ways that we can create some kind of a bridge to gap, to get over the gap of our transit desert. And I would very much like to talk with Director Gabius and perhaps even Director Stanford because of her membership in the Islands Trust as well. And there was a few different federal and provincial funding models that were discussed yesterday. I will be putting together a report for the board. I haven't had time to do it yet, but as is my habit, I like to write up a one-pager when I've attended one of these meetings. So I look forward to discussing this more in depth.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're done there. The next item up is item 5.1 under Communications, which is a release shared with us by the Islands Trust and by GUM, if we don't have an Islands Trust representative here at the table. Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. It's just such a pleasure to finally be able to present something to the communities at large as well as established referral agencies such as the Sunshine Coast Regional District. But the Islands Trust policy statement, it's our foundational document. The last time it was updated was 1994 and I feel like we've been struggling with it for at least six years, so hence my sort of attention to it. One of the primary reasons that this document was restructured the way it was, was the lack of specific wording towards housing, which has become a big issue on the islands, like it has on so many other parts of BC, and also a complete lack of recognition of rights entitled. In one of probably the most complex administrative areas in the province, there's 31 recognized nations within the Islands Trust, over 450 islands. So there, you can understand why there's a lot of complexity and we're looking forward to having as much response to this first draft. One of the other complicating factors to anything to do with the Islands Trust at this level is we are mandated to provide this vision, not just on behalf of residents of the trust, but also all people in British Columbia. So please, whether you're participating as part of the SCRD, but also as a resident of British Columbia, please put your thoughts in and we'd like to hear from you. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciated that. I also very much appreciated the map on page 195 showing the Islands Trust because it's a very good map and it's handy. So I actually clipped that and put it aside so that I've got it available for the next time I try to remember which islands are in the Islands Trust. So here it is, Keats, Gambier, Bowen, the Thorman Bees. Bowen is not, it's outside. So, but the Thorman Bees are in and Anvil. Am I missing anyone?
The, what is officially called the Gambier Local Trust area, it's one of 13 federations that come together, but it's the largest geographically and the, almost the smallest population. But it does go as far north as the, past the Trail Islands, Turnigan Island, I think is one of the most northern, so it's up the Sunshine Coast and it does go as far as the US border. The only thing that it doesn't include is the specific island outline of the municipality of Bowen. So we get all the remainder islands outside of Bowen.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions or observations, we have run out of communications. I don't believe we have any new business, but we are going to go in camera. So I'm looking for a motion that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with section 91G, 91K, and 92B of the community charter. Moved, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. And we shall draw down the...
Look for questions from the floor.